Recording has started.
Okay, I'm gonna do the roll call first, although there's nobody on that, you know, from the public yet. Maybe I'll read that statement first, and then we'll do the roll call. Okay, well, yeah, here comes, well, here comes Lynn. Okay. Nobody from the public yet. I hesitate to race into this too quickly, so let's just give Lynn a minute to get connected.
Seven o'clock is seven o'clock, Rick.
I know, I know. Okay, seven o'clock. I'm gonna identify the participants. We have Dana Oviat, Nip Tanner, Blake Powell, Beth Steele, myself, Rick Smith, Chairman. That's the five Commissioners. There is Larry Dunn and Lynn Marshall as alternates who participate in the short-term rental discussions, and Jen Johnson, who is staff. So that's the participants for now. Part of the Governor's allowance for remotely-held meetings, I'm gonna read this statement. "This meeting of the Knowing Zoning Commission will take place through Zoom Remote Meeting Technology. My name is Rick Smith, Chairman of the Commission. The host of the meeting is Larry Dunn, alternate zoning commission member. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time. The participants in this meeting will be the Commission members and staff and speakers at the public hearing, if we have any. At the discretion of the Chairman and with the concurrence of the Commission, elected alternate members of the Commission may participate during old business, during discussion of the short-term rental issue. Participants who would like to comment on an item or share a screen item should indicate you such by using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand visually in front of the screen. After the raised hand has been detected, the participant will have the opportunity to speak after being called upon by the Chairman. Participants should mute their microphones until called upon. Procedurally, to offer a motion or second emotion, Commissioners should physically raise their hand and be acknowledged by the Chairman. To vote on a motion, Commissioners will be called upon individually by the Chair. Public and participant in the meeting as observers and at the start of the meeting during the general comments section of the agenda, which issues not on the agenda can be raised for future Commission consideration." There are still no public spectators. "All participants, including Commissioners and staff, must identify themselves before speaking each time they speak. Someone please remind me when I don't do that, because I rarely do. Members of the public can also submit comments by writing to the Commission after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed tonight. Finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the Town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting." Okay, now, to call the roll. I'm gonna identify people, wave your hands. It's kind of pointless now, but for the future, people reviewing this video record. Dana Oviat, Blake Powell, Nip Tanner, Beth Steele, Rick Smith, those are the five Commissioners. Now Larry Dunn and Lynn Marshall are the two alternates, and Jen Johnson is our staff member. So that's the participants on the meeting so far. Tonight's first order of business is a public hearing on the solar panel text amendment. I will read what was published and point out the proposed change. "All applicants for design review shall first be reviewed by the zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer may approve minor applications for design review. These applications shall be limited to replacement of windows, roofing, doors, steps, stairs, decks, patios, siding. The additional language is roof-mounted solar systems, consistent with Section 24 of the Knowing Zoning Ordinances." That ends the added new language, and it continues, "and other exterior features with the same or appropriately similar styles that will have a minor impact on the property, provided that all applications are in keeping with the intent of the Design Review Regulation Guidelines of Section 2.26. Otherwise, the zoning enforcement officer will refer applications to the Commission for further review if necessary, and in his opinion. Applications approved by the zoning enforcement officer by this method will not be subject to Section 2.26.8 posting of property." So that is the purpose of the public hearing tonight. I was slow-walking the words, but I still don't see a member of the public, and for the record, we received, as of six o'clock tonight, we had not received any written submittals on the subject of the hearing. So there are no written responses to be entered into the record. So that's a formal part of the process we don't need to do. Okay, is there a motion to approve? First, let's have some discussion. Does anybody want to discuss anything, or simply move to a motion? Okay, Nip?
I move that we approve the Knowing Zoning Commission's proposal to amend Section 2.26.6.2 of the Knowing Zoning Ordinance by adding the language that you just read.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Blake Powell, second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, wave your hand. That is five, myself, Dana, Blake, Nip, and Beth. So it's unanimous, five to zero. So that will be sent to the day for publication tomorrow. It'll be published Friday, and it will be effective Monday, so that Bill can begin approving these things in his office hours on Tuesdays. So thank you for that. It should make us a little more efficient. General comments, there are no members of the public yet that have joined, so there won't be any public comments on subjects not on the agenda. We also have no applications tonight for design review. Is that somebody joining? Okay, so we have the zoning officers' report to approve. And that is the last two pages of the agenda package that was emailed out last week. It's a very long one. You've seen it. Do you have comments on this? Seeing no comments. Without objection, I would call it approved. Is there any objection? Okay, we'll call the zoning officers' report for June and July of 2020 to be approved. Next order of business is the minutes of the July 21st regular meeting and the August 4th special meeting. They are pages three onward of the agenda document that you emailed. Any comments on the minutes? Take July 21st first. Okay, I see none. Are there any comments on the August 4th 2020 meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none without objection, we'll call those both approved. Any objection? Seeing none, they're both approved. Yes?
Um, I'm belatedly reading the minutes of the August 4th.
Okay.
Wait a second, is that, yeah, that's, that's the one that I missed.
Yeah.
I don't think the minutes reflect that.
You're right.
Sorry about that, Nip.
I know, Harry can, and it's easy to miss me, so that's okay.
I'll fix it.
It's Okay, Lynn sat for you. Okay, so that should be changed to reflect that Lynn sat for Nip. Good catch.
I have that on the 21st, not the 4th.
He was talking about the August 4th. Well, let's slow down just a beat now and make sure we're talking about the right meeting. Are you sure it was August 4th that you missed? Those were the presentations, and I thought you were there for the presentations.
Correct.
July 21st.
Right, okay. Let me go back and read this.
Yeah, Jen has it right. Good staff are hard to find.
Okay.
Marshall seated for Art Tanner, so we're good on that. Thank you, Jen.
Okay.
No change needed.
Sorry for my confusion.
Good job, Jen. Keep us honest. Okay, so that's minutes. Old business. That's the presentations. Before we do that, though, let me just change the order for a moment. Is there any new business? I mean, we've had different things going back and forth, and I just wanted to be sure nobody had thoughts and ideas that they wanted, I don't want to lose sight of them at the end of the meeting, which is why I'm taking them now. Any, no, okay. So then, going to old business, it's the presentations, which continuation of the last meeting, and I had sent a proposed order of engagement, which would be Larry first, then Blake, then Beth, then Nip. So if you all agree with that, Larry, you can begin with yours. Dana?
Larry, your lips are moving, but nothing's coming out.
Oh, you're muted, Larry.
I can't hear Larry yet.
Hi. Unmute. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? That doesn't, that doesn't sound good. It shows my microphone is working. So I am not sure what's going on.
Larry, we can all hear you.
Oh, you can?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I just updated my machine, and I had a preference that wasn't set to allow me to share. So let me try that again. There we go. Now I'm sharing. I wanted to take the first minute to give a quick update on the impact of COVID on STRs. I thought you'd be interesting. I just got that today. Where they're at is there's been a rebound in STRs around the country, and it's within about 3% of where it was before the COVID hit, and they came back, as you see here, significantly faster than the hotels did. On the flip side, complaints are up 239%, mostly due to parties. And you probably heard about COVID parties, and they're now having a lot of new cases as a result of short-term rental COVID parties. So I just wanted to share that to you, is that what we're talking about kind of gets tied up in other things, and it's, you know, I'm not sure it's good news, good news. I think it's bad news, bad news. But anyway, that, that was just a quick, a quick update on what I what I've gathered from some of the national compliance software folks. All right. When, when I step back and look at the ordinance objectives that we all agreed to, is I tried to simplify it in my own head about what are the major drivers we had to address. So one was the commercial profit motive. And by that I meant, or I mean, people, if people are in this business to make money, then whatever ordinance we devise should restrict the profit motive, and at the same time, not impinge upon, let's call it, you know, residential owners, et cetera. So I'll talk more about that later. Second point is that owner accountability to manage disruptive activities, and that's everything, whether it's parking, or trash, or noise, all these other, other activities. And then the third one, you know, is the trifecta here, is enforcement. It has to be enforceable in a cost-effective way, and it has to provide information to not just us, but also the community in terms of what's going on in short-term rentals. So I'd like to dig in a little bit to each one of those three. In terms of the minimized commercial profit is if you're a non-resident, and the definition of that is it's owned by, it's occupied less than six months, which is the state definition, then there'd be a delay, you know, a three-year wait for getting a permit. And my view is, you know, that's certainly debatable. We could do a year, two years, but that, that appears to be one that's been used out there in, in other towns. If you are an owner-occupied residency, there would be no wait period. The third, item 1C, is I did put together a return on investment model that talked to mortgage utilities and taxes for homes in Knowank. And when I ran it through a number of different iterations, it kind of came up with 25 days to recover taxes, another 75 days to recover their mortgage. So if I'm gonna buy a property, if I can't rent more than 100 days, you know, or charge a hell of a lot more than my assumptions, then there's no profit motive to do that. So that's why I put 100 nights maximum, and I thought it would certainly be for discussions on what the objective would be, but that kind of gives you an indication of, you know, some of the, let's say, the profit dynamics in there. No events, and one part doesn't mean parties. I mean, one, one rental party per STR rental. The second area in terms of accountability to manage disruptive activities is I think we all talked about that if somebody's there or living, you know, in the, in the unit, that that's most likely going to manage disruptive activities, because there's somebody right there, or to have a local contact that's physically responsive, not a phone call, but physically responsive, and I pick the time of 60 minutes, and that's certainly a variable. The other part, the to-be part, is a notification. It's part of the permit process, so that when we go through that, if there's objections, et cetera, the same as anything else you do in a, in a permit, that could be then a matter of public knowledge. Similarly, once you have that data and it's part of the enforcement process, one can also distribute or acknowledge any issues that come up to that set of folks. One of the things is that that if you have one person complain, you might have 10 people or 10 homes within an immediate area. The other nine people may be affected, and maybe they didn't call, right? That's the reason for that. The third item, and I got a little add-on information on that, is that a low-cost enforcement that eases permitting and monitoring. And after looking through this whole thing, as I've kind of came up with the, with a viewpoint that the cheapest way for us with the most information was a compliance software platform that would be customized to our specific ordinance, and the full 100% of the cost of that, plus the administrative costs, and I'll give you the example of that in a minute, would be covered by the permit fees. Based upon the research, and Lynn, who I guess dropped off and has not rejoined, is that?
Yeah, I'm, I can see you.
Okay. That, you know, through all the work done, is that there's three, you know, probably three major nationwide companies. I picked one pricing example, just to give you guys an idea of that. Meanwhile, Lynn and I have developed a selection criteria. If the Council agrees to go forward with that, to be able to do a RFP and a selection of a specific compliance platform. The other aspect of enforcement is that there's escalation of fines, so that there's some pain even on the first occurrence, and it kind of gets worse, and then you finally get a permit, permit revocation if it becomes a habit or recurring issue. Just as an example, here's one that's based upon a per short-term rental model. So I dress identification, compliance, rental activity monitoring, audits, and seven-by-24 dedicated hotline. It's, it's 102 per year per unit. Lynn did some back-of-the-envelope calculations, and, you know, it might be for 40 units or so, another couple hundred bucks. So you're in the 300-year per STR rental. That's to be verified, but that kind of puts it in the range of, you know, that's what it would be to do everything. This might be high, but we don't know that right now. Just as a footnote, the, the platform provides online permit process. All of them actually scrub about 50 short-term rental websites. I mentioned before, it matches to a specific ordinance, what we come up with, and it does facilitate and provide the ability to collect the permit funding and/or collect the fines. And this was out of the document, was the suggested one it has. It does provide online disruptive activity reporting, so somebody can just get online and make a complaint. It manages complaint processes with letters, et cetera, that go out, and it provides, and you can develop unique reporting to the community, you know, for the CZO to use, and for the zoning commission to review. And that's kind of it. I'll go back and open it up for questions. I'm certainly well within my 20 minutes there. So any, any questions and clarifications on what I just went over? I yield it back to you, Rick. You're on mute. Lynn has her hand.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, there we go.
Yes.
All right. Now, questions for clarification first? Anybody? Nip?
You talked about how your proposal is aimed at supporting the goals, but, you know, I haven't read the goals in the last day or so, but my recollection is one of our high-priority goals was to protect the neighborhood feeling of the residents. And you know, it, I just don't see that in your proposal. What am I missing?
Well, I, I think that was it, because if you're a non-resident, there's a major waiting period, which means it's going to disincentive for anyone to do it. And if you are owner-occupied, there would be a limit on the number of nights, which is, can be discussed, as I said, you know, you could do from 25 days up to some other number. Those number of days would provide the limitation to reduce the number of STR rentals in total. All right, no events, no party, you know, no events or parties. So those are the things that I think were the key items to achieve that objective.
Can we continue the dialogue?
Well, you can continue with your question. I mean, I don't want to debate things. I want to ask questions for clarification. Lynn had her hand up first, and she's using the icon, and then Dana. Lynn?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. All right, so for the the residential, meaning to principal residence, they're more than six months a year versus non-residential. So the only difference in this proposal between those two categories is that if it's not your primary residence, you have to wait for three years after purchase to use it as a short-term rental. There are no other differences. Is that correct?
That's correct. You could do zero short-term rentals for that period of time. Yes.
Right. Then, then there is, this is what I'm not getting, that there's the owner occupied at the time of rental versus the non-owner occupied, and how are those treated differently?
Well, it's if, if there is an owner occupied, or there's a physical, local presence to respond to any issues, in that sense, the rest of it is equivalent. Yes.
Okay, well, so, so the, there are no, the owner or operator occupied are treated the same. And, and, but within the regulations, they're not treated any differently than non-owner occupied, as long as you've got someone to respond.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, so there's no, okay.
If I could add to that question to see if I understand you correctly, there is a difference, as Nip pointed out, under 1A and B. That's a fair difference, that non-resident, non-residential owner has the three-year wait period, and if it's owner occupied, he doesn't.
Lynn said after that.
After that.
Assuming that, then, then is there a difference?
Right.
All right, then for for permit requirements, so you start out with in 4B1, and so the applicant's going to be signing a statement signed by the S, the short-term rental operator, authorizing the CEO to inspect the premises to confirm compliance with our rules and postings. So that is things like, what are the house rules, town rules, floor plans, emergency exits, all, all those kinds of things.
Correct.
Now, here, the what I'm going to say next is because the only limiting factor here, which makes it really, really critical, because there's no, anybody who buys property in Knowank can operate a short-term rental under your regulations, they can have as many of them as they want. And the only limiting factor, basically, I mean, is that three-year wait, if they're not, it's not their primary residence, and the number of days that they rent per year. So it's very important to have a way to verify that. So would you not want to include under that permit requirement section, a statement signed by the short-term rental operator, authorizing zoning authorities to conduct audits on the number of rental days?
I absolutely agree. I mean, I was assuming that, but it should be I, I absolutely agree. I mean, I was assuming that, but it should be specifically stated.
Okay.
Could you scroll that up, Larry? So we see item four. There you go. Thanks. Keep going.
No, no, item four is out. She's reading off of the more detailed document.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah. Which I could bring up, I guess, if somebody.
Yeah, it's hard when you got two documents. It was great because one of them, you know, gives it in, in the, in the language of the zoning regulation language, and then this has got a nice summary. So thank, thanks for those. So going through that longer document, which is what I was reviewing on 16. You're talking about parking. And where you say if parking at the property at which the short term rental use is located is a nonconforming use, the same opportunity shall be allowed for short term renters as for the short term rental operator. I mean, I think this gets really interesting because the short term rental operator basically has no parking restrictions whatsoever. They can have as many cars on the street as they want. They can have as many guests as they want, all with cars. There are no restrictions. So then that, are you intending that to apply to the short term renter as, as well? I mean, if the person has onsite parking, they're limited, but it seems as though if they don't have it, then they can do whatever.
No, I didn't think it said that. But let's, let's put that as a, as an item for other discussion. No, there, there needs to be parking restrictions. And, and if you look at five, not point three, it does talk about the restriction. So there may be some, if there's an inconsistency there, then that would have to be addressed.
Yeah, I think it gets, I think, you know, that's something that I think we're going to have to, to tangle with on all of these. And so, you know, like what if, what, what if the operator's there at the time of their rental, you know, because we talked about substituting the, their spots for somebody else. What if they're there? Or, or what if the operator doesn't live there? It's just, this is an investment property. And, 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 and when you've talked about, it's so important that these be verifiable. But how in the world would we enforce this?
The, the only enforcement is when neighbors complain. That's why you need an easy way to gather and then evaluate complaints. I mean, there's no, I mean, there's, there's certainly automation to identify the number of days that are rented, to identify who's renting it, to identify if there's a party or not, that they, you know, paying how it's structured. There's nothing on parking, right? Other than you've agreed that this is the maximum parking, you do it. And if there's a complaint and you violated that, then you're in violation of the, of the ordinance.
Yeah, so, so I just don't know how, when somebody's complained, how, how do we verify it? And the same thing is with I, you know, we, we talked a lot and liked the maximum occupancy of two people for bedroom. But again, like if, how do you enforce it? If the plane's registered, who inspects it before the guests are gone? Particularly, you've got in there a 24 hour notice and even if, even if the ZO is available on weekends or something and showed up, the people are going to say, oh, yes, I'm part of this here? No. I mean, I don't know how we verify this stuff.
That's, that's consistent, no matter what we do. I, I mean, the items you mentioned, so I don't think it's specific or unique to, you know, what I was presenting here.
Yeah. All right, in the, in this plan, you've got the individual, a short term rentals can't exceed 100 nights per year. And I like that you tried to figure out, you know, how, what it would take for cover taxes and mortgage on, on average. And I realize you were trying to keep it from being commercial, but I'm not sure about that. So with the taxes, it seems like the homeowner, homeowners in our document with history and problems, the homeowners asked for help with taxes. They didn't ask for help with their mortgages.
Which is why I, I'm showing you that if, if we're focusing on taxes, then 25 days should be enough.
Right.
And so, in other words, there should be a rationale behind the number of nights we pick. And that, that's one of the reasons I was trying to provide a rationale, right, which would provide any defense, if you will, you know, if we're challenged. Well, 25 days is enough. What, it's enough to get all your taxes done. What's the issue? Right? But again, as I was on the profit motive, don't buy a house if you want to make this a short term rental business. I definitely wanted to limit it to that. And if I'm buying a house, if I don't get back the taxes, the mortgage, utilities, et cetera, then why would I do it? But that was, that was the, the sense of what I was going for.
Yeah, I, I, I think when we look at goal E, which was the discouraged replacement of permanently occupied residencies or long term rental properties by short term rentals. I think that 100 days of short term rentals would bring in more money than a year of a long term year of rental. So.
That, that's fine. That's why I put it in quotes. I said that one is, is a discussion topic for the commission.
Right. And, yeah, and I, I think we do need to discuss it. And then I think that because I don't know if you remember the workshop where, where one of the long term renters asked him, how many days would you put on as restriction? And, I mean, the short term renters and who's, who's doing it at commercially annoying. And he said 100 days. So that was okay for him for commercials. So I think we may be into the commercials on there just to think about. But I like the fact that you have the range and you've got a justification. So it gives us something to work with. I'm also thinking that in, in terms of trying to discourage the commercial investor, which is, I think we'd all agree we wanted to do. So when you're differentiating between the primary residence and the non primary residence, you're only using that for the waiting period. And that just slows people down a little bit because you can, you know, you can rent it for three years as a long term rental. You can live there and remodel it, or in the military, you can collect them during your three year tours of duty and keep the house for your, help with your retirement. So I, I guess if you, are you, I mean, are if, if, if you want to eliminate commercial investors, like why not require that the short term rental be the primary residence of the owner? That, that does it.
That's certainly an option.
Yeah, so, all right.
I'll set one. Okay, Dana?
Nope, I've got, I've got. That for the permit revocation, you have 365 days one year before they can reapply. And why not make it two years to three years? You know, a stiffer penalty really, really gets people's attention. Would you can, do you think that would be a good idea?
I guess it depends on applying doesn't mean it gets approved. I think it depends on the nature of the offense, if you will, or the, or the violation. So I think there should be some degree of thoughtfulness put into it rather than, my own opinion, rather than saying, you know, this is what it is regardless. You know, I think we're supposed to serve the community, so we should at least listen. But you're right, you could, you can put in a bigger number and then they can apply for a, you know, a, an offset to that. So, you know, somewhere along that is fine.
Okay.
How long are we going to have? 25 minutes?
We're, we're done with 25 minutes?
There's other people who have questions. How are we all going to fit in? I didn't get to ask them on.
I, I, I will stop and let other people ask. I still have one question, but give other people a shot and see how we are for time.
So, let's go back to Nip then. I didn't realize that you were not done. So that's my fault. And then we'll go to Dana.
Okay, Larry, how would you deal with a non resident? You know, someone who is rarely here, who currently is a short term operator?
I don't, there isn't a difference. In other words, there's nothing in this that would talk about precedent or grandfather clause or anything like that, if that's what you meant.
No, you say, you know, non resident has to wait three years, but they're currently operating. Do they start now without a permit? They have to wait three years before they can resume operation?
That one is, yeah, I guess my preference would be reset the clock, but that one I think we need attorney input on.
Okay.
I mean, I, I hear you, Nip. And I think, I think that'd be, that'd be great if the guys, it's illegal now. This is the new rules. But, you know, we, we get challenged and the question is, do we think we're legally on solid ground there? And I, I can't tell you that without a review.
Okay, but your inclination would be to be resetted if we could?
If we could, yeah.
Okay. Designated local contact physically responsive within 60 minutes. How local is the local? Why do they get 60 minutes?
Again, it's variable. We could, we could put it at 30 minutes. It, the question is, is how fast do we want somebody? And how close they need to be? They need to be close and they need to be very responsive. So, you know, Lynn brought up the point of, oh gee, their parking issues and by time you get there, you know, somebody's gone. Well, no, that the, you have to rely that there's going to be some, well, to some degree, there's a degree of honesty with people, but it would need to be quickly. I wouldn't have a problem with 30 minutes. But I just wanted to start something that's close. And physically would go to that house, to go to that home, look at it, take a picture, write it down, you know, take their eye watch and take the noise reading that you have now on the new eyewatches. You know, there's, there's, we have technology now that we didn't have before to measure noise and other things. So I, I think it can be done by neighbors and or by the local, local contact or the owner.
Got it. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, Dana?
Dana Oviet. I just want to clarify how you came up, Larry, with the frequency rental. Can you just restate that one more time?
Right. I put together, I, I looked at who's renting today, the cost that they're charging per night, the average home value. And then I did look into what, what if I had a, you know, a new mortgage, what the cost of the mortgage would be? And what the taxes would be based upon the, the average assessed value. And so I cranked that through and came up with, you know, the 25 days or, you know, and or the 75 days. So it was a you know, it was a pure model based upon knowing averages at the time I did it, which granted was about, geez, about two months ago now. So it, you know, it, it, it could be redone and updated based upon, you know, are the rentals going up? Mortgages are going down, by the way, so that, that kind of goes the other way. Taxes almost never go down. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And actually, my question is, my, my second question is, how does your calculation fit in with the goals? Because, and the reason I'm asking this question is because I remember very distinctly my opposition and people agree with me that we should not be in our goals putting in a statement where we want to help out people with short term rentals and affording their houses. And your calculation isn't based upon the goals at all. So I'm wondering how I, I'm wondering why we're even discussing the affordability or these calculations, which can be easily argued when they're not even in the original goals that we decided on.
Well, the original goals that almost, most of the proposals had a number of days, whether it's number of days per summer, for here, for there. I was just providing some background. I did no way that I suggest that we would put recovery of taxes or mortgage in the ordinance. This was a mechanism to provide a rationale to select the number of days versus an arbitrary number that says it's going to be 10 days. But, you know, that, that was the reason that, that was the only reason is to provide some rationale and to keep out commercial profit incentive, which means you got to cover your costs and make them, and make a, make a nickel. Right? That, you know, so that, that was why. So it wasn't to change the ordinance to say that. It was to help craft the ordinance and have something behind it.
Got it. Can I ask one more question? And it relates to this, if, and this is just a theoretical question. If you were trying to abide by, you know, you know, pick a frequency, rental frequency that abides by the purpose to preserve the residential character of knowing and so forth and so on. Do you have any idea what frequency that might be?
Well, you, 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 there's been a number of proposals that talk about, for example, oh, every rental can't have one night. Every rental's got to be three night minimum, for example. I mean, that's, that's one approach of doing it. Again, I'm also, I also would like to think about how you measure and manage this, right? So I'm looking for simplicity. So something that says the minimum rental would be three nights. You can't rent for one night or two nights. You got to rent for three nights. I mean, that's an approach. Another one would be, I mean, there's a variety in some of the other proposals that one could layer on top of this if you wanted to be more specific on the frequency. So I, I would agree with you on that, Dana.
Thanks, I'm done.
Blake or Beth? Okay, I have a couple. Did you wave, Beth? No, okay. I also wondered about the, the 60 minute response time, but I think he handled that okay, so I won't belabor that. I do wonder whether you considered is there a, let me think of a buzzword that can convey this. The 100 short term rental nights per year. If there are no constraints on spacing that out, that's 33 weekends or seven and a half months, which would be every weekend from about April to about October. And given that one of our goals is to try and minimize the frequent turnover, I wonder if you thought about whether you had envisioned a process to spread those out or to limit them like once per two weeks, once per week, once per month. Somehow to provide some breathing room for the neighborhood in between all of what is the, could be a very frequent turnover at 100 nights.
Yep, no, I, I hear you, which is, I was trying to think of simple, simple ways to manage it. And the more yeah, the more tweaks you put to how many nights, how many nights during certain periods, then the more customizations you got to do to the code to track it and then and then to validate that it is. So I was trying for simplicity. and then to validate that it is. So I was trying for simplicity, which is why, A, you could reduce the, reduce it to, instead of a hundred nights, like I said, twenty-five nights. I mean, so if you, if you kind of play with that, does that provide enough flexibility to achieve the results of the objective? Every time we add another complexity to the measurement, it just ripples all the way through the compliance, the tracking, the management, the verification. And I was just trying to keep it simple. That, that was, that was the prime driver there, by the way.
When we get to debate, that may be something we want to pick more up on. Next question. You had a couple of things in here which were kind of intriguing. One of them was the, the section where you said compliance with town ordinances. In other words, the, the renter and the owner, I guess, were obligated by our ordinance to comply with all town ordinances. And I just wondered if you thought about, does that make us liable for their non-compliance with the town?
Well, no, that, no, I, I, well, I don't think it would, because they sign up as part of the permit fee to be totally responsible. It's their obligation to sign up to it. It just allows a neighbor, someone else, to raise a complaint that they're not, I suppose, and allow us to take away their permit if, in fact, they're not adhering to it. So, no, I didn't, I didn't believe it put us in any obligation.
Yeah. You see, the reason I ask, our public hearing draft last June had, we were obligating people to prove to us that they were in compliance with fire code, health code, on and on and on. And most of the discussion since then, we took that out. And the one thing you pointed out in, in the draft decision document was a replacement that said, they sign off saying they're responsible for that and we aren't. And I just wondered, is that the same kind of thing that you would envision for compliance with town ordinances?
Yes.
To make sure, A, I don't want knowing fire district to be responsible for things that we really don't have much control over. And I don't want us legally liable because we have something in our ordinance that suggests that, like, if we said you have to be in total compliance with the fire code, well, that would mean we'd have to go in and, you know, look the house over frequently to make sure they're in compliance with fire code. We decided that wasn't our purview, so we had taken that out.
But, but most, most towns say you're signing that you are, you, the homeowner, are in compliance, which they should be anyway.
And that's, that's why I asked the question the way I did, to make sure that the burden is placed at the right spot, and that's with the owner. Okay. The last question I had, I had a couple of comments in here, things I liked in too, but I'm going to save those for debate. The fines, I just wondered, can we find someone for advertising if he didn't actually rent it? And I think that's how I read that section in your plan. And I think I saw it in Lynn's also, but I'm not sure now the passage of time, but with yours, it was.
I'm thinking about it. And I, and I'm talking about, there's a very specific instance today with the COVID that the state says you can't. And if somebody still advertises it, are they in violation of that state order?
And are they in violation of our ordinance?
Well, either way, but I'm just saying, this is today. This is really happening, right? So, so I think the thing is, is that if they'd never rented, are they in violation? I guess my common sense would say it's not the ad, although that's a metric. It's whether they've actually done the rental. Now, part of a audit of the property is that if they've, for example, if they've gotten the, let's say we settle on, I don't know, twenty-five days. And they, we clicked up, they hit the twenty-five days, and it's still being advertised. It would be very easy to then send them a pre-form letter that says you need to take the ad down because you've exceeded your twenty-five days. So I think that's, right, and if they fail to take that down, then that would be, could be grounds for saying you're now in violation because you're not, you know, adhering to the, to the request. That's getting into the, into the weeds a bit, but I understand the point. And as we get to enforcement, we got to think through all those permutations and combinations ahead of time so that we have a consistent response.
Okay. All right. That concludes it for me. Any questions? Oh, Larry, we went over on time, so. My fault, meeting management. Okay. Who? Okay, Blake, you'd be next up.
Hey. All right, so. My, kind of big picture look at all this is, I really do think we're making things more complicated than they need to be. I think, you know, everyone agrees first and foremost that we're trying to make short-term rentals or permissible use, allowing people to rent their homes to offset their expenses, or, in my opinion, for whatever reason they want. It's really not our business so much what they're doing, why they're, what their motivations are. But at the other end of the spectrum, I think there's broad consensus that we want to deter investment properties that are operated as a hundred percent short-term rentals, that would displace residents. So I, I think we can deter the investment properties very simply by, first of all, just having an ordinance in place. Certainly makes it clear that there's a process for having a permit and having a permit revoked. And that alone is a bit of a deterrent for a full-time investor, but also limiting the total number of days. And Larry talked quite a bit about that. One thing I feel strongly about there was I don't think that we need different standards for different categories of homeowners. All homeowners, who are paying property taxes, should be treated the same by the regulation that we come up with. We don't need a different distinction between full-time and part-time residents, the amount of time someone has owned their house, hosted versus non-hosted, et cetera. I think whatever we come up with should be applied equally to everybody. And everyone gets treated the same, so they get the same opportunities to rent your home, but they're also subject to all the same limitations. So the, you know, primary limitations that I looked at, you know, first and foremost, you know, we don't want the behavior of short-term renters to create objectionable traffic congestion, noise, smoke, all the stuff that's already in our ordinance. So, and then to deter the investor properties, the number I came up with was forty-five days for a total for the, for a year. I'm pretty open to what the actual number would be. That seems to be a pretty reasonable amount to me if someone's interested in deferring their expenses. But originally, we had proposed something like thirty-two or something like that. Forty-five seems reasonable to me without creating too much traffic. And then I said two short-term rentals per four-week period would be permitted. And I'm not sure that this is even entirely necessary, but it addresses those concerns that people have about the turnover. I don't know if you can say that a single four-week rental is any better than four one-week rentals. But certainly, if, if that's a concern, we could limit it to, I think, two short-term rentals per four-week period seems to be a reasonable way to do it. One thing that's in some other proposals, and Larry talked about it, but I'm very intentionally against any kind of monitoring company. I think that might be applicable in the city where you have anonymous neighbors and a huge number of properties. But I don't think it has any place in a small, close-knit community like knowing. It's really, does not go toward the building a community that seems to be, you know, one of the objectives we all state. The permit process, I think, pretty simple, but one of the key things is letting your neighbors know that you intended to get a permit for short-term rentals. And then with that would be the contact information for somebody within the fire district, whether it's the homeowner and alternate, that would be responsible for following up on any issues that might arise. And I would really see that issues would be resolved, you know, by that person long before it ever gets to his EEO or to us as a board, so. I don't think there's a need for a, you know, inexpensive and an intrusive monitoring company. That's pretty much it. There's more in the proposal, but it's only page and a half long, and I really don't think it needs to be much more than that.
Okay, thank you. Questions? So. Who, I see Lynn and then Dana.
All right. Blake, does your plan apply to renting rooms, apartments, legal accessory buildings, and whole-house rentals, or just the whole-house rentals?
It would apply to all of it. Any short-term rental, whether it's a room or the whole house, hosted, non-hosted.
Okay, it's all, all right. On your operational standards, the second one, you say the short-term operator or a locally available within the fire district secondary contact, does that mean that someone must be available physically present within the fire district at the time of the rental, twenty-four-seven?
It's a little bit in the weeds, but the way I would, I would leave it just like that. The issue is, if there's an issue that the renter or the neighbor cannot get in touch with the owner, whoever that might be, and they cannot get in touch with the alternate, then that issue, then, you know, their permit becomes at stake. So it's in their interest to make sure that there's somebody that they can respond and resolve it at a local level long before it ever gets to a ZEO or us.
Right. I was wondering, you know, if, if there's no, I like, I like your approach towards simplicity. I might just push it a little to see if we, if, if it makes sense to do that. So if there's no performance standard for response time, could this make it more difficult to call a strike for the three-strike rule? Who decides what's reasonable and responsive, and will it hold up easily under appeal without a performance standard, do you think?
Well, I'm not necessarily advocating a three-strike rule. I mean, the way I see it is, you know, infractions or complaints are not all equal. So someone could have, a neighbor could be complaining about where someone's parking, and they call the owner, and the owner resolves it, and the next rental comes, and same thing happens. The owner calls and complains, takes care of it. And next thing you know, you have three of those, and it goes to the ZEO for a formal complaint, perhaps. But, but even still, that's a lot different than one loud, big party that the police have to come and break up. I mean, that would be one instance that I wouldn't wait for three strikes to be out or anything like that. So it's going to be up to the ZEO's subjective judgment. And if he bumps it to us, it would be the commission's subjective judgment as to how serious the offense is.
All right, so that would, and so that would, that goes along the same lines then as the parking, such that it doesn't impede traffic? That that would be, use that. A lot of subjectivity and common sense.
Well, I, I don't think that's even that subjective. If you can't get to, if you can't get cars by your street, you're impeding traffic. You know, if an emergency vehicle can't get by. If you have to pull over to let the oncoming car come, that's impeding traffic. You know, the regulations we have right now talk about how many parking spots you're allowed per, you know, size of your house and bedrooms and all that. But I really don't care where you park, because people don't park in the driveway even. They park in the street still despite that. So we don't care how many parking spots you're allowed. We care where you park. Is the traffic congestion is the issue we're trying to minimize.
Okay, good. Under operating limits, the second one, you, you have the limit of forty-five days per year. And I think that you, you're somewhere in the sweet, sweet spot zone for that. It seems like it's enough days to help the property owner pay the taxes and to actually substantially help with taxes, you know, across individual properties. It probably goes from more than covering taxes for some places and to making a big dent in them in others. It's not enough days to bring enough money to displace long-term rentals and not enough days to be attractive to commercial investors. So I was just wondering, how did you determine that number?
Well, I, pretty much what you just said. It seemed to be some reasonable balance between offsetting expenses, without being too presumptive about what people's expenses really are, but also deterring full investment property. And I would, you know, err on the fewer days than more days for the purposes of deterring investment properties. You know, during the public hearings, we asked people who were doing short-term rentals how many days they thought was a reasonable number, if there was going to be a limit on it. And we never got any meaningful input that I'm aware of. So I'm open to debate on what the actual number is, but that seems to be pretty reasonable to me.
Okay. Along those, the same lines, your, your forty-five days in your plan can take place anytime during the year. And so according to the feedback we've gotten from short-term rental operators in knowing that most of those days would, if not all, would take place in the summer. Now, right now, we don't have that many short-term rentals in the fire district, so it's not a problem right now to have them clumped in the summer. But the number of short-term rentals is rising, and that's, that trend is expected to continue. So we don't have any limits on the number of houses, or that it'd be principal residents or any of that. So we could have quite, quite a lot of them in clumps. Do you think that that, it might get overwhelming if there are a lot of them happening at the same time, even, even with the forty-five-day limit?
Well, I, I don't see that happening right now. I don't suspect that it's going to happen, but certainly if it did, we can always revisit our rules. But for now, but I, like I said before, I, you know, feel strongly that it should apply equally to everybody. So, you know, having a certain number per street or certain number per full-time resident, certain number for a part-timer, I, I just don't think that's fair. I think, you know, it should be applied equally to everybody. It's the only fair way to do it.
Do you think that allowing short-term rentals in all houses for forty-five nights per year encourages more part-time owners, that that would accelerate that trend by making the houses more affordable? You know, easier to have just something to vacation now?
I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. I, I don't see we're going to have a whole lot more short-term rentals than what we already have just by having a regulation in place.
On number three, where you're saying no more than two short-term rentals per four-week period, are those, are those no more than two initiated or occurring at all during that period?
I think you're in the weeds here. We can, what it really means, but I think, I think you get the idea. You know, if we want to, if people want to discourage a lot of turnover, two in a four-week period seems to be a reasonable way to do it.
All right. You're saying, for replication of permit, you're saying that enforcement will be by neighbor complaints. I think that, that, obviously, the neighbors will be the source of nuisance complaints for the noise, smoke odor, trash parking and everything. But the neighbors can't be expected to keep track of how many days per year each of the short-term rentals in their immediate areas rented out, or how often a rental at each of these is initiated per month, or however that works. And even if they do, then how do you prove it or enforce it if you don't have any monitoring software? And how do you propose to keep track of the amount of rental activity at each property without that?
Well, I, I think the neighbors would have a pretty good idea of the rental activity. But the other thing I'd say is if it's not creating any objectionable traffic congestion, noise, smoke odor, or unsuitable conditions, I really don't care if it's forty-five days or forty-six days. If it's not creating, you know, it's the end result that we're really worried about, not so much the number of days. We want to make sure that there's not, you know, behavior that's a nuisance to the neighbors. We want to make sure that there's not, you know, behavior that's a nuisance to the neighbors and those types of things. So I, I don't think we need to worry ourselves too much about the exact number of days and how we enforce that with. I really do think that a monitoring software or company really has no place in a small, tight-knit community like knowing.
Hey, Dana, who are next?
Dana Oviette. Hi, Blake. I just have one pretty simple question. Forty-five days seems like back in kind of an arbitrary way. And I don't mean arbitrary in a simplistic or demeaning way. But why, why not just, if you're going to be so relaxed about this and the monitoring, why not just have it unlimited number of days? What was the reason for 45 versus say, just leave it all out and have it unlimited?
Well, like I said, one of the reasons and the whole purpose was to deter investment properties. So we don't want to make it attractive for someone to come in, displace a homeowner or resident, and have a full-time Airbnb business.
That's it.
Okay. Nip or Beth or Larry?
Up for me.
None. Okay, none for Beth. Don't have a gun. I didn't have any for Blake. Okay. Then Beth, you're up.
So recently, my father-in-law brought over a book that some of his relatives had compiled about the history of my husband's family in this village. My husband's family are banks, and they originally came here in 1888. And over the course of the next 40 to 50 years, they lived in no fewer than 11 houses in the village, including my father-in-law claims Blake's house at one point. So I mentioned this history because one of the goals that we've outlined is the preservation of the residential character of knowing. But to understand what we're preserving, we have to understand our history. And the history of the village is one of rentals, both short and long-term. And people did it then for the same reason that they do it now, to defray costs and help themselves to stay here. So basically, to try to preserve the ability of full-time residents who want to stay in their homes to deal with the rising costs associated with living in this village, including the taxes, I propose a simple plan, and the plan is as follows. During the peak season, which I define as May through September, you get two rentals a month. I'm defining a rental as a week or less. I don't care if the rental is, you know, in the, in the month period is two weeks consecutive or separated by a week. And I, and I say this because you only get two weeks, because even if your renters are great people, it gives your neighbors a few weeks where they don't have strangers next door to them. The rest of the year, the short-term rental operator, realistically, they're not going to be able to rent this out two weeks, full weeks, a month, because the demand is just not going to be there for a month, or excuse me, a week-long rental in a month period of time. So I'm still a work in progress on what happens during the rest of the year, but I'm leaning towards they get one full week during the month or they get every other weekend, because I just don't really think you're going to get a lot of week rentals. I would put a three-year moratorium across the board on anyone able to get a short-term rental permit from, and, and that would start the date we pass the ordinance. Meaning if you've owned your property already for three years at that point, then you're entitled to get the permit. If you haven't, then you've got to wait till you own your property three years, and then you're entitled to get the permit. I don't make a distinction between full-time residents or part-time residents. Parking is on-site unless you don't have any. In that case, you get two spots on the street, including your own. And with respect to the noise, you know, basically the nothing obnoxious standard that we've been talking about, and I'm adding the no fireworks standard, because quite frankly, I think it gets a little crazy. Fourth of July, it's one thing, rest of the year, that goes under the obnoxious noises. No events or parties, period. You want to have an event or a party, throw it at your own home. Don't, you know, you don't need to come into the village, because that just adds to the obnoxious noise that we're trying to prevent. And enforcement, if you get three complaints in one year, you get an automatic due process hearing and whether your permit should be revoked. And if you're revoked, you're banned for two years from operating a short-term rental. And there are, I suppose, other factors that I didn't put in my plan, but I do agree with, such as having a local contact who has to live in your district. Meaning if I live in the residential village district, then my contact has to also live in the residential village district. And I think the 60 minutes might be a little too long, because you don't want to listen to it for 60 minutes if it's going on and on and on. I really think a 30-minute standard would be sufficient. And other than that, you know, like I said, there are many minutia that I haven't fed it out, because I think the majority of us seem to agree on, on the tiny details. It's the bigger details that maybe we disagree on. So that's my plan.
Questions? I have one on the parking thing now. I don't know if this lost translation in the form that Dana had made up earlier on, but I think I understood you to say, if you have a driveway, you're all, all your parking has to be off the street. Do you mean if there's no off-street parking, then you get two spots on the street? Is that correct? Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. And the other one was the rental frequency. It looks like that transitioned a little bit for the off-peak months, October through April. Could you say again what you had said?
Like I said, I'm a work in progress there, because I'm really not sure. I'm still thinking about it, but I, I think that you.
A month, or did you say once per, or two rentals per week?
My thought process is a hybrid of those. So if you're doing like, if you can get a week-long rental in those months, then by all means, you get one week-long rental. But I really don't think that that's going to be the norm. You know, maybe around Christmas or Thanksgiving, if people are coming to visit family, you might get that. But otherwise, you're going to get a weekend. And so the thought was maybe, you know, like a three-day weekend, two-long, three-day weekends. But again, like I said, I'm open to suggestion on that. I'm a work in progress on it. I haven't committed myself to any.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Others? Dana?
Dana Oviette. Beth, would monitoring be necessary?
I, I personally, I kind of agree with Blake's point of view. I think the neighbors will monitor it, but I do see what Lynn had said about how do we know that they're actually renting it? You know, if they're only allowed to, to rent it 70 days a year, how do we know that they're only renting it 70 days? If the cost wasn't terribly prohibitive, and Larry's presentation was the first time I had seen the cost that was associated with that, did not seem overly crazy. You know, I wouldn't be against monitoring with an outside company, which certainly wouldn't take away from the right of any neighbor to make a complaint if they, they saw it. Because quite frankly, the things that we are, that I'm most concerned with are the noise and making your neighbors' lives, lives unpleasant. And who is better to monitor that than your neighbors?
That's a funny.
Okay, Dana. Nip or Larry or Blake? None, none, none. Okay. Lynn, did you have more? I know I cut you off then, because you took 10 minutes, and I was afraid other people wouldn't get it. So feel free to continue if you have more.
Oh, I haven't asked any. To Beth.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was on Blake's. I stopped you short. Lynn, sorry.
Beth, do you think that the waiting rule by itself is sufficient that homes won't be turned into businesses with the owner seldom there?
Yes.
Say that question again.
Do you think that the waiting rule by itself is sufficient that the homes won't be turned into businesses with the owner seldom there? Or, or does it just decrease the possibility, slow it down a bit?
I think the moratorium is probably sufficient. Who wants to carry the taxes and mortgage for a property for three years when you can't do anything with it? If that's your intent as an investment. So, yeah, I do.
Do your rules apply to all types of rentals, whether they be rooms, apartments, accessory buildings?
Yes.
Okay. So your amount of activity then allows the people who own apartments to make considerably more money for the rental of those apartments, for turning them, converting them into short-term rentals? That's one of our goals, to not do that.
Potentially, they could, but I mean, you're assuming that they would. Your, a long-term rental is going to be able to put someone in that, that unit 12 months a year. And under the regulations, no matter how we craft them, everybody agrees that there's going to be some limitation on the amount of nights that you can do. So I don't know if I, I guess I, I agree with the premise. I don't necessarily think that allowing a person who has an apartment to use it during, you know, certain days or weeks would allow them to neglect all other rentals.
It's just that the, you're allowing rentals totally throughout the year, except for during those summer months, they're two weeks when they're not allowed, two weeks per month when they're not allowed at all other times during the year, are they? And there are enough days, there are enough days total to far exceed what's required for that to be, for it to be more profitable, to have it be a short-term rental than a long-term rental under your plan, I think.
I'm not sure if that was a question or just a statement.
Yeah, yeah. What, if you'd thought about that, the number of days.
I have thought about it, and that's why I said that, again, with, with respect to what happens for the remaining eight months of the year, I, I'm still a work in progress on that. Like, I realize that it may be what I initially have proposed, may or may not, maybe too much, may not be, I don't know, but I'm still thinking about that aspect. But as far as the summer goes, I mean, I think that's primarily when anybody's going to have the ability to make some money that's actually going to defray the cost of taxes. So I am pretty set on the two weeks per month.
Why, why is a seven-day rental by two separate parties better than 14-day rental by the same party?
They can have it to, they can have two, if, in the, in the summer, if they want. I just care if it's, that it's two weeks out of the month. I don't care if it's the same party, they want to rent consecutively for two weeks, that's fine with me. I don't care. So if my, my plan said otherwise, or was interpreted otherwise, I apologize, because that's not what I meant.
Okay, all right. You know, wait, when you're saying with the parking, you're saying with, if you have a driveway, all of your parking has to be on your property as well as your own cars, or if you're there, or any cars you might have left there. You know, I like this. It makes more sense to me than a formula for how many cars per bedroom kind of thing, because I think there's just so many exceptions with that. But, and do you think it's important to require that the limit on the number of allowable cars, which would be unique for each property then, to be part of the advertising?
Honestly, Lynn, I haven't thought about that.
Okay. So for the off-street parking, you're saying you allow two extra cars in addition to your own, so two, two spots on the street. If you've got a lot of these and you've got two extra spots on the street, could you end up with a lot of, you know, with the full-time residents not being able to park there?
I think the majority of people have, have a driveway. So I don't really think it's going to be overwhelming. And there certainly are, are properties that don't have any driveway, but the majority of them do. So I don't think, it's not like every single person who gets a permit gets to park in the street. It's just those who do not have any, any.
As a driveway, which just has to be for one car, so it means they couldn't rent out a room, because they don't have parking in the driveways.
Well, again, if you've got, if you've got room in your driveway. If you've got a driveway, you can probably get at least one more car in there. So it gives you the ability to do a rental. You know, you might not have a full parking lot available for five bedrooms, but so be it. That's the way it goes.
So under your plan, the, the owner doesn't have to be there very much. And they say if they do want to have their rentals during the winter, they want to have it open all those times. So it's only during the summer months that they have, have to have a couple of, of weeks when they don't have to have it. You know, with one, if there's one house in the neighborhood doing it, that might not be, and that house is rented out a lot, you know, how does that contribute to the neighborhood? And then if you have four houses doing that, in a block that are doing that, I mean, it seems that it's, it's, are you okay if some of these are converted into businesses with the owner not being there?
I'm not, I'm not even sure. I, I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question entirely. But I, my, under my plan, it does not matter if your owner occupied or you've left and you're just renting it out. So I, I don't make any distinction, which at the beginning of the question, I thought you indicated that I did, and I don't, so I'm not sure.
Okay. So I, I guess, you know, in terms of protecting property values, so if a house is surrounded by short-term rentals and the owners are seldom present, and they're, and they're renting it out as much as they possibly can, how is that going to affect the property value if somebody's trying to sell their house?
I'm not a Realtor. I don't know. But quite frankly, knowing the village, I think this is a very desirable area. And whether you've got a short-term rental going on next door or you don't, people want to be here. So I personally don't think it's going to have any effect, but I am not a Realtor, so I would defer to the opinion of one.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Others? Larry?
All right, real, real quick, Beth. I, I think you said two weeks a month for five months is 70 days. Is that, is that the right calculation?
No, it would be two weeks a month for four months. So May, June, July, or, oh, no, yeah, September, you're right, five months. Yep, that's right.
So that, that comes out to 70 days.
Okay.
I'm just, okay, I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Others? Okay, that, couldn't, Blake?
So just, that question confused me maybe. So looking at the document that we had done here, this one.
Yep.
Highlights, so under the number of nights rental defined is one contract for seven days, and it's 150 nights per year maximum? Is that still what you're talking about, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't come up with the math on that thing. So I think Rick, I gave Rick my information and all that got computed in. Like I said, I don't know, I'm still up in the air about what happens the rest of the year. But as far as the, if, I'm talking about two weeks a month from May until September. So if that's 70 nights, that's 70 nights. And then the other periods of the year, it may be a month more. So yeah, I mean, I could get up that high. I don't know. I haven't done the actual calculation on the off-peak season because I'm not really sure which direction I'm going with the off-peak.
Yeah, thanks.
Others? Okay. That concludes seven presentations and question and answer, which I thought was pretty useful. And in my email about the meeting today, I had suggested a process to follow, and I wanted to see if there was any agreement or disagreement.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
I apologized.
I know you don't like what I have to say.
I know, I'm getting. I apologize. Good gosh. We will now hear from Commissioner Tanner, and I will devote my full attention to him because I'm embarrassed.
Second time tonight. Okay. My proposals are intended to preserve Knowing Village as a group of neighborhoods for year-round residents who live in close proximity with each other and participate and support the communal activities that Lynn Marshall articulated so clearly in her, at the last meeting, as the glue that makes Knowing Village a special place to live. As Lynn noted, the year-round residents are the ones who staff our commissions and fire department and are the backbone of our many community activities. Among these is my personal favorite, Knowing Luminaria, which is produced by more than 50 families, the vast majority of which are year-round residents. Well, my first choice in drafting regulations for short-term rentals would be to formally prevent them completely. I recognize the current majority of the commission does not appear to favor that approach. Therefore, my proposals are intended to minimize the impact of short-term rentals on the neighborhoods by keeping their numbers low, spreading them out, and keeping the frequency of rentals low. Because of my belief in the value of year-round residents to preserving the quality of life in Knowing Village, my proposals are less restrictive for this class of short-term rental operators. At the other extreme, my proposals do not allow a property owner who does not live in Knowing for a significant portion of the year to operate a short-term rental. While my proposals are focused on Knowing Village, that would be the starting point for regulations for the rest of the Knowing Fire District. Under my scheme, once the regulations for the village were developed, the commission would then proceed to decide to what extent it would be appropriate to modify them for other zoning districts based on factors such as average lot size and distance. In noting that all, that not all Knowing Fire District zoning districts are the same, it is my personal observation that while Morgan Point is included in the Village District, in some regards, it is more like other parts of the Fire District. However, the current reality is that it is part of the Village District, and the rules for it must be the ones that are designed for the majority of the village, not vice versa. Obviously, my proposals are pretty detailed, and I'm happy to answer questions, but I think it would be most helpful if they were more philosophical rather than get into the nuts and bolts of each of the many specifics that I've teed up.
Questions? And I believe we lost Lynn. I don't know why. Hopefully she'll be back. Larry?
On mute. Larry Dunn. So, Nip, you referred several times to the village. This ordinance is to the entire district, and there are short-term rentals that are outside the village. So are you saying that you're going to have this restricted just to the village portion of Knowing? For the, or for the entire Fire District?
I'm sorry. I, I tried to clarify that in my comments. My recommendation is that we draft regulations initially that would apply primarily with the intention of applying them to the RV zoning district, which is delineated in our, our regulations in our map. Once we've done that, in order to protect the village from the impact of short-term rentals, then we say, okay, now let's look at the rest of the Fire District outside the RV District and decide whether we want to just apply them across the board, but whether or not they, there should be some modifications to them because the characteristics of the zoning districts outside of the Village District would make that appropriate.
So you're proposing that there be a specific time period, whether it be one year or two years, to revisit the ordinance for the greater Knowing District?
No, in drafting, I'm proposing, we go through that process in drafting the regulations. I'm not the only one that in proposing regulations specified certain regulations for certain zoning districts. And that's, and there's, you know, like, the architectural design review does not apply to the entire Knowing Fire District. You know, it would not be groundbreaking for us to craft regulations that were in one form or, you know, one set for the Village District, and there were some modification, modified version of them that applied to other parts of the Fire District.
All right, I mean, thank you. I, I understand your point of view.
Thank you.
Okay, Lynn's at a big disadvantage here because she didn't hear the presentation, which was in addition, supplemental to the metric and quite good. Unfortunately. That's the burden we'll have to carry on.
Well, I, let me just add the, the final comment that I made. Lynn, what I said was really philosophical in terms of my goal of preserving the residential neighborhoods for year-round residents. And I said I'd be happy to answer questions about my philosophy, but, you know, there's a lot of detail in my proposal, and I don't think it'd be productive this evening to drill down into the, why did you say 45 days for this category of owner? And you only had 35 days, or whatever the number was, for that category of owner? So just, you know, in trying to limit it, we're, you know, we're down to 20 minutes or so. Any questions you have, if you make them kind of big picture, I think it would be helpful.
But that's a, a good expression of intent, but I'd be loathe as chairman if I didn't let anybody ask any kind of question they want.
That's fine. I may choose not to answer, but that's fine.
I have a philosophical one, but I'm, I'm waiting to see if anybody else asks other questions. Dana?
Dana Oviette. Nip, at the risk of asking a question that you don't want to answer, how, how do you operationally define the difference between your first two columns, a full-time resident and a part-time legal resident? Because differences, full-time and knowing with only occasional brief absences versus absent from Knowing for continuous weeks or months. So my first question is.
Can I answer that? Can I answer one at a time?
Sure.
Okay, the, the first.
Before you do, Larry, could you bring his matrix up from that individual plans document? That might be helpful. Two or three people were members of the public.
All right, let me, let me go dig it up.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has it.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Dana, first question. Dana, the, the language for the first column was essentially lifted from regulations that were adopted in Preston, allowing people to have accessory apartments on their property. And basically, it appears that their intention was to only allow it for those situations where the homeowner is basically on premises a very high percentage of the year. The second category that I defined was a step back from the first one and recognized that there are situations where homeowners are vacant for a portion of the year. Some people may have property someplace other than Knowing where they go for the summer. Other people may have property where they go for the winter, our chairman being an example. So that's a separate category from the ones like me, who's here, you know, out of 52 weeks of the year, I'm probably here more than 48, maybe closer to 50, I don't know, but high, high percentage.
So does it make a diff? How you, how, how, how do you monitor who's, who falls in one category and who falls in another category? And does it make any difference to the plan?
Well, it, it makes a difference to the plan because under my proposal, the full-time people have the most freedom to operate short-term rentals, and it gets more restrictive the less time that people are here. In terms of monitoring it, it would probably start with the, as part of the application, people would have to self-identify what category they fall into. And in terms of ongoing monitoring, I'm sure I could think of ways to do that that would not be terribly intrusive or expensive.
That's it for me for now. Thanks.
Others? My philosophical question, and forgive me, I've asked this before because we did discuss this matrix a lot more carefully or very thoroughly again in May. And that's why I don't have an awful lot of questions because I ask them mostly at that time. I still wonder, yeah, that's not the one. Never mind, Larry. Yeah, the, I was looking for Nip's alone, but don't worry about it. We've moved on. The, I understand the, the, the intent in your heart for leaning in towards people who are full-time here and therefore greater part of the community in principle. I, I wonder if you've thought fully about the, the need to make that rational basis argument to give regulatory benefit to people because they live here all the time as opposed to somebody who doesn't live here as much. And leaving aside me, I'm, I'm not even thinking about me when I say that. I'm just wondering, the whole point of equal protection in the Constitution is you treat everybody the same unless you have a rational basis for treating them differently. And I'm looking at those columns now in your matrix, and it's the same concern I had in May that we're presuming we give more benefit to a legal full-time resident than we do to someone who is a legal property owner, but for whatever reason, only lives here in the summer and goes to Kansas and works their full-time job for nine months. And I don't know how we make that rational basis argument that it's okay to treat them differently in a regulatory sense. So have you thought through how you would justify that?
Yes, and I would be happy to, you know, write that down if we get to the point where we feel we need to have that documented. And I think Lynn articulated it extremely well in our, our last call. And she's done it multiple times as, in the year plus that we've been having these discussions, that the people who are here full-time are the ones that make the community work. They're, you know, as I said in my comments, they're the ones who staff the commissions. They're the ones who staff the fire department. They're the ones that support the community activities, the Historical Society, Knowing Luminaria, et cetera, et cetera. The, the, the kinds of activities, I mean, you know, most people that I know in the village who live here feel that it is both special and unique in terms of the sense of community. And, you know, and they're mostly people who are here at least nine months a year. And most of them are here, most of the ones that I'm thinking of, are here more than that. So I think it's, I think you can make a, a clear logical argument about why those people are deserving of more privileges under these regulations than people who are not making similar contrib, not in a position to make similar contributions. Well, you may not buy it, the judge may not buy it, but I think there's a clear logical argument. And I think Lynn has articulated it better than I ever have.
Okay, more to come in the debate, but I appreciate the answer.
Okay.
Other people with questions? Lynn, unfortunately, somehow you dropped off the, have you caught up enough? Do you have questions?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
But is anybody else questions? Because I've asked a lot. Did it hit me in the end? Is it?
If you don't ask, then we're going to be about done, I think. So go ahead.
Okay, I just didn't want to take anybody else's time because I've had a lot of time. So, and Nip, are these rules for renting rooms, apartments, accessory buildings that are illegal? And the whole house rentals applies to everything?
When I drafted them, I had not thought about that point. However, since you've raised it, I strongly agree with you that we should not allow short-term rentals of any rooms that would be eligible to be long-care rentals. We, I feel strongly that long-care rentals are a higher priority in terms of achieving some economic diversity in, in the, in the village at least. And so I, yeah, I, my preference would be. And so I, yeah, my, my preference would be not, if there are probably more apartments and detached accessory buildings that could operate as apartments, I would prefer they not be eligible for short-term rentals, but they'd be used for long-term rentals.
And I, I still have questions on the categories because I, I, I could think of lots of examples where I'm not sure what category, but I won't take time because that would get down into the weeds. But I, I think that still, but it's still difficult for me to parse it all always. And, and how to determine residency for these number of months? You know, I, I don't know how we document that very well.
Well, as, as Larry asked, or maybe it was Dana, you know, I would start with asking people what their resident status is and give them the, the category and say which of these categories applies to you. And then, you know, take it from there.
When you're saying the minimum age of the renter, do you mean the minimum age of the primary renter being 25?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're saying the number of families per rental as being one, did they absolutely have to be a family, or it can, it can be a party per rental? A group of people? So I could go with some friends and rent a house for the weekend.
Hmm, I'm less sympathetic to that.
I'm sorry, the question was, does the party have to be all members of the same family? And you, you would prefer that, but, yeah.
It just, it's very just lying, I mean, because people are gonna do it anyway. You had mentioned one rental per street. When, when you brought that idea up before, I don't think you got any support from the other commissioners for it. And I, I wonder how important that was to you? And when we're talking about ways that are defensible and still address the issue of people contributing to the community and not, and probably wouldn't get too much clustering, what if, what if, what if the short-term rentals were only allowed in properties that are the primary residence of the owner? Would that accomplish some of the same goals? And every, so every owner who lives in Knowing then gets the same opportunity for renting?
Well, it could be, but then you're, you're being more restrictive. You know, you're substituting the restriction that the only rentals are to people who are occupied. Well, that's okay, but I, you know, if that's all that was up for discussion, I vote for that. But I still have a concern about clustering. And, you know, given the small lot sizes, you know, we literally live on top of each other here. And the, the fact that there could be a stretch of three or four houses where all of them are short-term rentals during the summer, and even if they're only every other week. I think the character of that neighborhood would be dramatically different than what I value in Knowing.
Thanks, that's all. From me.
Other people, have, have you come up with other questions since you've had time to listen and think? None. Okay, we're five minutes before nine. I would say we've got a lot of thoughts and ideas over the last two meetings to mull over and chew on, and at our next meeting, which on our schedule will be September 1st, we ought to start out first talking about cross-cutting ideas, and then, as I had said in my email today, ask ourselves whether any of us are persuaded by what we've heard to think differently than we had in the past. If the answer is yes, we have to figure out where we now sit in different positions. And if we, none of us have been persuaded, then we just proceed with what we had been doing before the presentations. Very informative presentations. The question two weeks from now should be, does it influence anybody to go in a different direction? Does it influence me to go in favor of limited permits? Or does it influence somebody who didn't feel the same way about something? Have they changed their mind now? And I think that's a good thing for us to spend two weeks doing. I, I could tell you, the other thing I'm going to do is, because I've heard two people and makes three, that if, if at all possible, and maybe it isn't, I hear a majority saying we ought to try as hard as we can to make this thing as singular as possible. Not entirely if it can't be done, but same rules for everyone unless there's a good reason to be different. I'm just going to spend my own personal time trying to figure out what that might look like, whether it's in a matrix form or however I decide to do it. But that might be useful to look at a couple of weeks from now and say, that just doesn't meet my needs, or maybe it does. So that's food for thought, that left point. But do you agree that what we ought to do on September 1st is talk about the cross-cutting ideas and talk about anybody, has anybody's mind been adjusted after hearing the presentations? Do you agree with that, or would you like to do something different? Lynn?
What's, what's a cross-cutting idea?
Things, I can't give you a good example, but if something that Nip had said crosses over into the kind of thing you proposed or Dana proposed, because you all sort of have the same, there are some fundamentals of your three. You think about it for a few weeks, and you might say, well, you know, I could adjust mine to capture that thought that Nip had. And maybe you, you do it in such a way that a majority of commissioners say, ah, that's an aha moment, and let's do that. I just, I want us to think as creatively as possible. The other one is easier to understand. I mean, did your mind get persuaded by somebody else? If it didn't, okay, you know how you feel, and that's fine. Same with me or anybody else. But we ought to leave ourselves the opportunity to say, you know, gosh darn it, now that I've heard his proposal, I just saw the light, and I'm, I'm changing my mind on points two, three, and four. And we ought to be prepared for people to be able to do that if they wish. Just my own view of how to proceed. And we don't have to decide it tonight either. So having said all that, is there anything else for the good of the order you'd like to discuss? Or would you like to enjoy the last two weeks of August on summer break? I vote for summer break myself, but I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Okay. Moved, second by Blake. Second or a comment? Second.
That was a second.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of adjourned, say aye. Waiting, okay. I think that's unanimous. Thank you all. Very informative meeting again, so we'll see you in two weeks.